Hey, good evening, everyone, on this beautiful, beautiful evening in Northborough, Massachusetts. It is the 29th of April, 2024. My name is Mitch Cohen. I will call the Northborough Select Board to order at this time, 7:03. Let me read some opening stuff. This open meeting of the Northborough Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023 relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This act allows the Northborough Select Board to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation, unless such participation is required by law. This meeting, as just about always, will feature public comment. I'll make a couple of quick notes that this is a special meeting of the board. Normally, for special meetings, we don't have public comment, but we decided, since it was the first meeting after town meeting, we would throw it on there and see if anyone had anything particular there. This is just a single-issue meeting to talk about solar panels. And with that said, let me make sure everyone can hear and be heard in the order on my screen. Lisa Moselli.
Here.
Laura Zeiten.
Here, thank you.
Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
Kristin Wickstead.
Here.
I'm Mitch Cohen, as I've said. I don't see Tim McInerney. Ah, here he is. Has just appeared. Hi, Tim, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Excellent. We hear you. Great background there. Also joining us is Keith Lavoie from the school department. And we'll bring in his guest in just a moment, but before we get started with the main topic of the evening, is there any public comment? If you are a member of, not already on the meeting and have something you, yes, Jean Cahill. Oh, Jean, I saw your hand go up and then went down again. All right, there we go. Jean, if you could identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hi, I was a member, participated in the Clean Energy Advisory Subcommittee for the Regional School District, and I made comments at town meeting. I just wanted to clarify that I am in full support of going ahead with this proposal. I think some people might have thought I was opposing it. I was just making the point that the difference between a power purchase agreement and owning panels is when you finance and purchase them as a municipality, you can get much higher benefit in the long term. So what my advocacy is for the town to consider a using ARPA funding for a solar array, because there are just so many reasons why it makes perfect sense. It's consistent with the intent of ARPA funding to help us through the pandemic. We missed several years of moving forward with climate during the COVID years. And the investment of, say, a million dollars in ARPA funding would return back to the town. We would pay back the money that we spent on the panels within seven to 10 years, very conservatively. That's, we would probably earn it back faster. And we would then have free power generated from that system for 15 to 18 years thereafter. We would earn at least twice the money back that we invest. We are eligible for federal funding through the 2022 Inflation Reduction Act that would pay 30% of the upfront cost. And it would just be such a quadruple win for the town, local, regional development of our energy resources, cleaning our grid, giving our kids a more hopeful future. And so that was the point. I was trying to make a town meeting, and I apologize. I think I stated it somewhat clumsily, and it may have sounded like I didn't support the PPA, but I absolutely 100% support you voting for it tonight. And just one other thing I wanted to make as a public comment was to be updated on what the Power Choice, Northborough Power Choice process will be, how the board will hear public comments, and what the next steps will be. And maybe that's the topic for a future agenda. And with that, I would just advocate that we have a much shorter town meeting, like four hours, not 14. Thank you very much.
You and me both, Jean. I'll quickly answer the question on where we are with the Northborough Power Choice, the aggregation process. So we had our public hearing back a couple of months ago. We got a lot of good input. We tweaked the contract, if you will, the language that we're submitting to the state based upon that. We've now submitted that to the state, and the next process is we're just waiting for them to do their thing, which we know will take several months. So there's nothing that the board or the town has on our plate right now until the state responds. So that's where we are with that. And appreciate your comments, Jean. I will say, just in regards to the fire station project, we have not yet made the decision on solar panels, but it is on the table for us to consider purchasing solar panels with that project. And I know we'll probably be looking at some other solar projects separate from the schools on the municipal side in the near future. With that, does anyone else have any public comment for this evening? All right, in which case, our main agenda item, review an act on authorizing the town administrators/chair of the board to sign solar purchase power agreement and lease documents in coordination with the superintendent of schools. We have with us Keith Lavoie from the school department and Brian Herr. Actually, Keith, why don't you go ahead and introduce Brian? And Tim, I don't know if there's anything that you want to start us off with?
No, you're fine.
Okay, Keith.
So, we really appreciate it. Thank you to the Select Board for this opportunity. I am joined by Brian Herr. He is one of the senior vice presidents at Select Energy. We do have with the school department a longstanding relationship with Select. They are the installers and owners of the solar array on top of Algonquin Regional High School, which happened in the late summer of 2020. And it's actually, everything is up and running and working quite well. What we've always wanted to do is explore all the solar feasibility for the schools. This has been a longstanding real goal of the school committees for years, and we're finally seeing some of these projects to fruition. I agree with Jean that solar was going to put on pause during the pandemic, but now we're able to reboot that energy that we had, no pun intended, and really see what we're able to generate. So we are here before you this evening with Brian, who has an update kind of on where we are and kind of the need for this expedited meeting. I think it's important to share that our intention was to go through the process of town meeting, which we fortunately were able to get the support of the community for both the projects, and then move forward as a regular schedule. However, Brian indicated to us that there were some incentives that we may be losing if we didn't act quickly, and I really appreciate the board meeting quickly after a very long week to entertain this possibility, and certainly be able to ask questions and hopefully allow us to enter into a power purchasing agreement and a lease agreement with Select. So I do have a short presentation that Brian is prepared for this evening. Before I do, is there any questions to get us started? Or do you want me to have Brian dive right in? Excellent. All right, Mitch, am I able to share? I believe I am. Should I go ahead and try?
Please do.
Okay. And Brian, are you ready to go?
Can you folks hear me okay?
We hear you.
Loud and clear.
Yeah, great. I'm in my car. My apologies. I'm a little, we're all rushed to try to pull this thing together. Listen, I appreciate the opportunity tonight to join you all. Thank you for making the time. I'm a four-term selectman in Hockington. I know what you do, and I know how many meetings you have to go to. So thanks. Thanks for coming in tonight. I'm actually on the ballot again in May for possibly my fifth term. We shall see. So Keith, I assume you're pulling up the Energy Community Bonus Tax Credit. Is that correct?
That is correct. I'm on slide number one, and just let me know when you want me to advance.
Okay, great. So we'll cover this first, and then I'll cover the Power Options Program, which is the state-regulated program that allows us to do this procurement for an energy project with you folks. As part of, as part of the overall financial package of putting solar together, whether it be on your house, or you do it on a school, or you do it somewhere else on a business, what have you, there's a big investment tax credit, or an ITC, offered by the federal government for all solar installations across America. In certain communities, they've put together what they're calling an Energy Community Bonus Tax Credit Opportunity. And these communities, it's a fast-evolving process, and we'll show you in a couple of slides here what's going on. But these are communities where the unemployment rate in those communities is above the national average, and they're trying to stir activity by encouraging solar development. So they're offering an additional 10% ITC or investment tax credit to the array owners to get these projects moving along. If we could drop down to that second slide there, Keith, please. It just describes this energy community overview a little bit.
Yeah, that's right. Now, Brian, go ahead.
It's a 10% bonus on your tax credit. There's no Department of Energy application process required. You know, it has to have a, the project has to have, it's got to be under construction, or it's got to be moving to, to a, what's called a safe harbor position, meaning we go ahead and spend the money on the panels to get them kind of safe harbored and tie up that, or get qualified for that tax credit, if you will. So that process is what we would do. Obviously, none of the solar development in Northborough would cost the residents of Northborough a penny to install. Select Energy and our financing partners pay for everything, and then we use these tax credits to help us finance the project, make it work, which allows for you folks to get discounted powers. The next slide is probably the most important one for tonight's meeting and the need to kind of accelerate this process quite a bit. For you folks, anyway, it may have not heard about this just yet. The program was issued in March of '24 by the IRS. So that was a month ago. And you can see in this chart here, March of '24 on the left-hand side. It goes back to 2023 for projects that have been in these communities that have been built. So you can backdate a little bit some of the projects. But you'll also see there's a window of opportunity right there between April and May 1. That is where we sit today. And then on May 1, the eligibility status of some communities may change based on the unemployment rates that are coming out from the Department of Labor. So we have the IRS involved. We have the Department of Energy involved. We have the Department of Labor involved, all at the federal government level. So there's a fair bit of bureaucracy and some disconnect, I think, as well, that you'll see here in a minute. So as we scroll down to the next slide, this was the Department of Energy Resources Energy Community Tax Credit Bonus Landscape in New England prior to March. And you can see just down there in southwest Connecticut, those were the only counties or towns, municipalities eligible at that time. Not much going on in New England, certainly not much going on in Massachusetts. Then you scroll to the next slide down, and these are currently the eligible communities for this 10% bonus tax credit as of March of 2024. That's the currently eligible slide. The next slide shows the various counties in Massachusetts and Connecticut where, because the unemployment from the Department of Labor Statistics is scheduled to drop below the national average, on May 1, those communities lose the opportunity for the 10% bonus tax credit. So we have this 30-day wind deal from the time that the IRS announced it until April 30th to get ourselves in order to try and save you folks. It's about $182,000, $183,000 in savings of electricity over the lifetime of the project based on this 10% ITC alone. And I'll explain the whole ITC and how everything kind of comes together with power options here in a couple of minutes. So the challenge for us this evening and why we're gathering, and I really appreciate you guys doing, taking some time, is we're going to lose that 10% bonus on May 1 based on the Department Labor Statistics that has been forwarded to us. Does that scenario make sense to everybody just from an ITC and this 10% tax credit perspective?
Yeah, I guess my only question would be, I know the town doesn't directly receive tax credits. So my question for you is, how does the town or the district benefit from that? And I'm sure there's a pathway through that, but I think it's worth a description.
Yeah, it's a great question, and that leads to the next piece of the conversation, if you will. I'd like to kind of talk about power options, which is the nonprofit entity that regulates this solar program on behalf of the state and the municipalities in the state. And I think there that question will get answered for you. And I'm sorry, folks, I can't see everybody's names on the, on my phone here. It's a little small, so I'll stay away from calling everybody the wrong name. So we have this tax credit situation with an additional 10%. So as I mentioned early on in the, in the conversation, the federal government, the IRS, offers a 30% tax credit for array owners across America. In addition to that, there's this 10% bonus tax credit we just talked about for certain communities for a certain period of time, and then it disappears. And we're back to 30%, okay? In addition to the 30% tax credit at the federal level, there's also depreciation, and then there's the state incentives for solar as well, which is called the SMART Program, S-M-A-R-T. The SMART Program, combined with the tax credits, creates a financial model for developers like ourselves to build solar arrays at our expense, fully at our expense, put them on roofs, put them on carpports across Massachusetts. And over a period of time, we get a return on that investment when you folks purchase that electricity from us at a much discounted rate. And I've got some information here that I can pull up in a couple of minutes to show you all that. Because there's the 10% adder in the tax credit for this bonus community thing today and tomorrow, we're trying to accelerate the process, and I can explain the legal side of this in a minute, too, to pick up another $183,000 in savings on your electric bill over the course of the program's life. Does that make sense? So there's, you know, you take all, you take the federal tax credit, there's 10%, you take the SMART Program, you take the rate of electricity that we're going to sell it to you. We put all that into a financial pool, and we come out with a return over a 25-year period or 20-year period of 5% or 6%. And we go to the banks, we're borrowing the money, and you know, we just kind of make it work. The key to this whole thing for a municipality, given the public procurement laws, is that Power Options, this nonprofit state-sanctioned entity down in Boston, regulates this for all municipalities in the state to choose to use this program. We had to provide two power options about two years ago now, and this is our second term with them. We'd had to go through an RFP process. They did the RFP process on behalf of the municipalities and nonprofits in Massachusetts. There were nine bidders, if I remember correctly. We were selected as a successful bidder. Pricing for discounted energy was part of that RFP. The contracts that we use was part of that RFP. The type of materials we use, it all has to be Tier One, bankable product, et cetera, et cetera. The service that we would provide, et cetera, all that was part of the RFP process. We were awarded that RFP process. And this is, as I mentioned, our second go-round. So over the years that we've been doing this with Power Options, we've done this work in approximately 80 municipalities in Massachusetts. We've done approximately 150 projects in those municipalities. Some will do one, some will do two, some will do three. We have, we just got, well, you haven't built them yet. We just got the city of Lowell did 11 projects with us. That's not showing up my numbers yet, because we haven't done those. Some of the cities and towns we've worked with so far, Medfield, Holliston, Framingham, Maynard, Norton, Newton, Fitchburg, Sudbury, so Sudbury's the one we'll talk about in a minute, too, because it's the same town council that you folks have. Sharon, Walpole, Dedham, Somerville, Grafton, Worcester, Danvers, Townsend, just to name some of those eight. We're all over the state, and the program has been tried and true with many, many municipalities. Hockington, where I mentioned I'm on the Select Board, I was on the Select Board for four terms. I haven't been on for a couple of years, but I'm looking to go back in May. We have done one, we've done five projects with Hockington. All those projects, by the way, as soon as somebody says the word solar, I get up, run off the board. So I have zero conflicts of interest with the town of Hockington, where I live and where I work. But Hockington has also been a big proponent of the, of the process. So Power Options, this entity that works with municipalities to kind of pool resources so they can buy the energy at a discounted price, is the overseer of this program. Every project we do with them, all 80 of those projects, even though we got the RFP, before we can build anything, before we can even put the contract out to you folks and take a look at, Power Options looks at it and makes sure that all the numbers we're quoting to you folks for energy consumption for your purchase price is in line with the Power Options Program pricing that got us the RFP in the first place. So there's the checks and balance that's constantly being worked in this process as well. All that comes together so that the town of Northborough doesn't have to do an RFP, doesn't have to get legal involved for all kinds of different contractual negotiations, things of that nature, doesn't have to worry about spending any money, and can go green, and can buy electricity at a cheaper rate, and that electricity that's in this program is fixed for the next 20 years. Everybody knows electricity creeps year after year after year after year. They have a big announcement in October every year in Boston. Electricity's going up 18%. Then they have a bigger announcement in April that says, hey, electricity's coming back down 13%. Well, it's still up 5% year over year, and that just continues on a path. It's typically averaging about 4%. So for all those reasons, it's a great program for municipalities. It's fully, you know, there's all kinds of oversight involved, and Power Options works very closely with us. They work very closely with KP Law, which is your legal counsel. David Dineski, in fact, called me today and said, hey, are we going to do the same thing as Sudbury? We just did this the other day in Sudbury at the end of March. We got a couple of contracts in Sudbury lining up, and David and Select went through the contract process. And he said to me today, if you guys match the Sudbury terms and conditions, as you have them for power options in general, I'll be good to go, and I'll let the Select Board and I'll let Tim know tomorrow, once I double-check the contracts you put forth. So you may have seen contracts come into your inbox this evening. We just got them cleaned up today, this afternoon, to match the Sudbury model. And if you haven't seen them yet, Tim will certainly see them in the morning. And so the discussion earlier today was if there was a motion on the table to approve Tim executing with KP Law's approval, that's kind of what would help make this all happen tomorrow. Save that 10% and save everything else in place. The overall savings for the community on the two schools, I don't have the, the financial model in front of me at the moment in my car. One of the schools was $800,000 over the life of the project, and the second school was $500,000 in total, all in that it all comes together. So it's a $1.3 million opportunity for the town of Northborough. The, you know, the, the risk, if you will, if there's a risk, is we're putting stuff on your roofs. That's it. No financial risk whatsoever. I'll stop there and see what questions anybody may have.
I'm speaking well muted. Before we open up to questions, Keith, is there anything you want to add before we ask the board for questions?
No, I think honestly, Brian did an outstanding job of placing it all together. One thing probably worth noting is, as we were exploring the different projects, this was part of a heavy review process. This didn't all just start in March, you know, for us. We had been investigating these for about a year or so, making sure that the conditions of our roofs were capable of handling the arrays, and that's what we have put forth for the proposal this evening. One of the ones that is not on for contract at this point is the Z School, because the Z School right now is a candidate for the Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerator Repair Program. And we did indicate that it is solar-ready. So once we are able to get a new roof for the Z School, we would hopefully be engaging the same type of contract to benefit from that brand-new surface on top of Z. But before then, we're looking at our new roofs. One is at Proctor, and the second is on the metal portions of the Lincoln Street School, which was renovated in 2016.
Thanks, Keith. Questions from the board?
Okay, I've got a, I've got a few. Hopefully I can even see them, because I've got no light, too much light. Looking at the contract today, so I'm just going to throw out some, hold on while I get my flashlight. Okay, here we go. All right. So the first thing when I was going through the different pages was that this is going to be a 20-year program, obviously. There's five-year, you can have one extension for five years. So like at Algonquin, you've already had, how many, how much time at Algonquin?
Since we turned it on, we went active in the spring of '21. So we're just coming up on our three-year anniversary of being active.
Okay. And you may be the first ones then to try that five-year extension, I would imagine.
Maybe.
Ownership of the facility. Who has ownership of the facility? Now, we have a landlord and we have a tenant, and it seems like the tenant would have the ownership of the facility. Is that correct? And what part of the facility do they have ownership of?
I think you mean ownership of the panels as opposed to the school, right?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't specify that. I'm just reading from the contract. So that's a pretty vague, vague remark that, you know, it's just kind of an interesting aside to get that information.
Okay, so I, if, if I could answer that, I just searched for facility in the contract. The landlord shall, it's in ownership of the facility is the section landlord should have, shall have no right title or interest in the solar energy facility in parentheses, the project or any component thereof. So I think they're talking, at least in this section that I'm finding here, the solar energy facility. So the panels and the equipment related to the panels.
So that's pretty much, is that right, Brian?
That is correct, yes. Select Energy and our investors would own the facility, lease the rooftop from you folks, provide the discounted power. But this is something we had discussed with Keith and the, or I'm sorry, David in the past, and worked through that language.
All right. So basically, facility is where the panels meet the roof.
Well, the solar, the solar facility is everything from the, the ballast trays, which is the weighted trays upward to the panels itself, and all the controls and equipment on the side of the building. Everything else would be the facility, I guess, of the building itself. Yeah, we wouldn't, we don't own the roof, but we own everything atop the roof.
Okay. We're down, right? Need some more of my plug, please. There's a liability of insurance. So the liability of insurance for us and for the company is a 100, was a million dollars for the first, first issue and 2 million for the aggregate. So, and maybe Tim would know this answer, what does that liability insurance premium cost us?
I just sent this to the insurance company today, so I don't know the number of it, but it's, it should be back. I'm hoping tomorrow or by Friday at the latest. That's just for the building. The apparatus that's on the roof is insured by Select or, Brian, is that true?
That's correct.
By you.
Yeah, we fully insure the asset ourselves. We own, yep. And we pay for all that, obviously.
Then I was looking at the chart that you had that showed the different, different years, 1 through 20, and the amount of savings, I guess it was.
Yeah.
So we're looking at, what, if you have, per hour, per year, kilowatt-hours, I guess it'd be, for years, 8,736, if I do the math correctly. So tell me, like, in terms of what, what amount of money do you think the savings is? I know that, that while we're going on to the, to the new type of aggregate for electricity for everybody, giving us the option of getting a lesser expense, right now, they're pretty much equal to what we pay already. So what is the difference? Do you have a figure as opposed to a percentage?
So again, I'm in my car, and there's a little bit of a disconnect in my own work works here in terms of the stuff in front of me. One of the schools, whichever has the larger array, the average annual savings against what you're currently paying is approximately $40,000 per year.
For the larger schools. So in this case, now we're going to be adding two schools to Algonquin, which Algonquin is the larger of the schools, correct?
No, so Algonquin's a separate solar situation entirely. We're talking about Lincoln School and the Proctor School.
Lincoln would then be the next higher, bit larger building. Okay.
And then, so that, that one's 40, approximately 40K a year, and the, the Proctor was the one that was approximately 25K a year, and those two numbers add up to that 8 point, or 1.3 million.
Okay. And how much, Tim, how much do we spend now? Or actually, maybe Keith would know. How much do we spend now on this school?
Well, I, I know most of the numbers for, for Algonquin, because I don't have them disaggregated by, by school, but you know, it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars per year for, for the schools when it comes to electricity. And we were, we are averaging in these first couple of years, 20-plus thousand dollars a year in savings for Algonquin itself. So I, I think, I think those numbers that Brian has given, based on the, the things that I've reviewed and our performance at Algonquin are conservative. And so hopefully, you know, we would do even better year to year.
That's a great point, because Power Options encourages us to be conservative so that nobody's disappointed down the road. I can say this, I think your average kilowatt-hour price in general is probably running around 20 cents a kilowatt-hour, give or take. And we're, the And we're, the contract will spell it out for you on one of the pages there. We're running at about 10 cents per kilowatt hour to sell it to you over that period of 20 years. So it's about a 50% savings. Uh, based on what I recall, the current price per kilowatt hour is. And that's both what's called your supply, which is, uh, the electrons, if you will. Plus the distribution charges from National Grid, uh, the two of them come together and it's about 20 cents a kilowatt hour.
And it looks like you could purchase it after the first seven years? Is that correct? When I was looking at that chart?
Yeah, you can. That's a, that's one of the requirements that Power Options has in the contract for, for you folks. Uh, it, it, it's, I haven't seen it been exercised yet, but it's a possibility, yes.
And is it a, in your estimation, is it something that is a, that is a wise investment? Or is it better just to keep it as it is and make discounts on the actual material that we're using?
So nonprofit entities that don't have a federal tax appetite have a very difficult time making solar arrays pencil because they just can't enjoy the 30% or 40% investment tax credit against the cost of the array. If an array costs a million dollars to put in and you have a 40 invest, 40% investment tax credit or a tax equity partner that could use that tax credit like a bank, right? Um, the array immediately goes from a million bucks for installation down to 600K for installation. So not having that federal tax, uh, appetite makes it very, very difficult for nonprofits to, um, to realize the savings or realize the return on investment for solar. I can tell you, there's one entity in Massachusetts that is a nonprofit entity, uh, that does purchase their own solar arrays. It's a very famous university in Cambridge, Massachusetts with an bottomment of $40 billion or some number like that. And, uh, those folks, uh, do purchase the arrays themselves. Uh, they like to own their, their array for various reasons. Uh, and they're not worried about the tax credit. Uh, we've done about 36 jobs to date with them. Uh, and they continue to purchase the array. They're the only nonprofit I know of in the state that's buying them.
Okay, so we're, we're not a nonprofit, we're a municipality.
Right, it with no tax appetite, correct.
And that, basically, that, that, what you just said, that tax credit would never apply to us anyway.
Correct.
Um, so then, at any point in time, then the municipality probably shouldn't purchase any of these, any of these if looking for a tax credit benefit, because we're
Yeah, there have been a couple of municipalities that'll buy a small one here and there just to own an array. Uh, but I think they've got a little excess money sitting around their budget somewhere and they go out and they, they'll do that, but they're not, they haven't. There hasn't been a major investment by any municipality in the state of Massachusetts that I've seen, uh, in the years I've been doing it.
Okay, so.
Like, if I, if I could, I could add a little bit to that under the, um, uh, Inflation Reduction Act that was signed a couple of years ago. There are opportunities for municipalities to take advantage of that by a direct pay process. That's, um, a little bit less than what a for-profit company would get, but it's still sizable. Um, we look at that through the process of, of, uh, Brian, we're in the process of designing a new fire station. Um, so, so we've been reviewing some energy efficiency options for that and, and the things we can get back there.
That's correct. The ones we have seen are using that, those funds, that's correct.
Yeah.
But those are different than getting an actual tax credit. That's just another, another, what, um, allowance, so to speak?
It's, it's actually a rebate that you get from the IRS. That we, that we as a municipality could get. Um, it, it's a more complicated process and it has, you know, it gets calculated based upon how you're financing it and things like that. But it's to correct that missing link of, eh, eh, for municipalities that do want to purchase solar but don't because they, um, don't, eh, because it ends up costing more because they don't have the tax benefits. You know, we don't pay taxes as a municipality. So they came up with this, this other way of doing it. Obviously, it requires the, the big capital investment upfront.
Alright, so then I was looking at there was a miscellaneous number two, uh, paragraph. It says it does not describe, I'm sorry, my, get me my own writing. The, the complete terms and conditions here. So this document that we have, the 52-page document that we have, is that the actual full contract? That, that everything that has all the terms and conditions in it, or is there another, another set of pages that has more terms and conditions in it?
Uh, I'll have to ask Tim, but I believe what's been forwarded to you folks is for each school is the power purchase agreement contract. And then a lease contract. So both would have to be executed, uh, in order for us to do this. So there are, you know, they do kind of feed into each other. Uh, so maybe that's what you're referring to.
Well, I'm just double checking to see if we had some hard copy later on because it says specifically that this document that we were looking at does not hold all of the terms and conditions in it. It just refers to them.
Yeah, I would have to defer to David Dineski on that. However, that's been set up in the past with him and his clients. Um, and Power Options, I assume there's, uh, the, the dots are connected somewhere, but I can't sit here and tell you that right now.
Lisa, I, I think that, so the PDF that we have, that's our packet, is 189 pages. And I think that's all of the documents collated together into one. And that's probably the confusion there.
Okay, because it's just, it's under, it's under the, uh, just, we have, uh, decommissioning period easements, ownership of the silly miscellaneous. This notice of lease does not describe or refer to all of the terms and conditions contained in the actual lease. And nothing contained here and shall serve to modify or amend the terms of the actual lease in the event of any inconsistencies between the provisions of the lease and the provisions of this notice. The provisions of the lease shall control. So I'm just saying that there should be some sort of hard copy somewhere for us to have.
Yeah, there will be for all, the notice of lease is in the packet as well. I can see where there would be some confusion. That's referring to this lease, which is the second document with the PPA is the first document. So now I understand what you're saying.
And then, um, then some of the other little questions that came to mind was, we talked, uh, a little bit earlier that the work is going to be done, um, when school is not in session?
Go ahead.
That is, that is the goal, yes.
Okay, so, um, and sizing of the schools because Lincoln Street is, is, is small, bigger than Proctor, what happens if there's not enough space to put all the equipment and the, uh, trailers and such like that at the schools?
Do you know what the answer for that would be, Brian?
I'm not clear on the question. Um, the, the arrays, sorry, go ahead. Is there some trailers or something? We wouldn't put solar on trailers, that's for sure.
No, just like as far as during the construction process, just like the, uh, interruption to you know, operation, the usage of space and things like that while the array is being assembled. I just recalled, you know, from Algonquin, it was quite minimal. You know, there were a couple of trailers, um, in one of the parking lots as well as some, uh, equipment that was fenced off. And, um, you know, it was relatively quick considering that was a very large array that was put onto Algonquin.
Gotcha. Yeah, so the, the process to install solar arrays is very benign. Uh, will show up. We do have a dumpster on site. We do have a porta potty on site and they are on the ground. So there's a couple of parking spots right there. Uh, and then the weekend or the days that we load the roof with the solar panels. Uh, there'll be a lull there and a couple of other larger pieces of equipment to get the stuff up onto the roof safely. Uh, and then once the roof is loaded, then a lot of stuff just disappears except that dumpster and porta potty. And the work is done on the roof primarily and you really don't, you don't see it. We've installed solar on school roofs when the kids are in session. Um, and, and on many occasions, some towns want to do it, they want to get done quickly. Others would prefer to do it in the summer, so we're flexible. Um, but it's a very benign process once we get going. First couple of days are a little noisy, but that's it.
Right, because again, my concerns are not, Algonquin is a high school. You know, they're, they're pretty older. Uh, we're going to small schools. We're going to elementary schools. And, um, so you run an elementary school that doesn't have a lot of security, parents are not concerned about security and all the sorts of things that have been happening and it's, you know, it's a serious, it's a serious concern for them. And, um, you know, the workers, if we're going to do it during school hours, are the workers Cory checked? Are the workers, you know, also having, you know, are there cameras? Are the cameras that were talked about being on site, would children be, would children be, um, taped? Do you know what I'm saying? All the concerns that we parents would have with little ones do come into play because now we have a contract that says you do have carte blanche to come in and do your job.
So, everything's up on the roof, everybody's Cory certified, great point. Um, that's a mandate for everybody. Even some schools, uh, when there's no one in session, don't require that. We do it anyway. Um, so there's, and there's no cameras down below pointing at any children at all. I actually was at a school the other day and I had to take a picture of the transformer outside. And there were teachers and kids there and I went into the office and said, I have to take a picture of the transformer over there, but I'm not taking my phone out of my pocket till somebody comes with me and says, go ahead and take that picture over there. So totally get it, uh, but we're very careful about it. And frankly, the building permits and everything regulate what we do as well as the licenses that we have with the state, uh, how we conduct ourselves through the construction process.
Great, great. Um, I'm asking questions parents would ask, so thanks for that. Um, and I guess the only other one that I'm going to ask and I'll let everybody else talk after this is that the letter from, uh, Greg Martino asks to have, um, uh, the TA, Tim McInerney sign the contract and the motion asked for the chairman to sign it. So those are two different requests.
Tim, I think the motion that we have is what council recommended, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, generally I, I would be much happier. Sorry, Tim, I interrupted you. What did you say?
We're just trying to hedge and to create the agenda. So we had to put it together in haste on Thursday, so we just wanted to have as much information as possible. And then when we got around to David today, he made the motion to be contingent upon the board's approval of the chairman to sign based on his approval of the documents that we, you know, we got at four o'clock today.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm just trying to make, you know, make sure it's, your paperwork is all the same.
Yeah, practically speaking, I always prefer to have the town administrator being you the signing authority, but this is the way council wrote it. So we'll do it. And my understanding, this is a DocuSign thing so that, um, there's, I could just do that from anywhere.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm sure there are probably some reasons to get wet signatures too at some point, but I, I, I live right around the corner from town hall, so that's easy to do.
Well, the last question too is then, the savings that we received that you talked about at the yearly, do we get a check for that? Does that go against what we owe in electricity costs? How is that, um, brought to the town?
What happens is you get an invoice from us for the power that comes off the roof and goes into the school at a much lower rate than the invoice you've been getting from National Grid over the years. So instead of spending a hundred grand a month, you're going to spend 50 grand a month.
Okay, but the extra savings, that extra bonus that we get for doing this by May 1st?
That's in those numbers. So that's in the numbers we're kicking around tonight. It would be less than that if we didn't do it by tomorrow evening.
Okay.
But basically Lisa, what we would get is a reduced, uh, National Grid bill. So we would actually be getting two bills. We would get one bill from Select, so to say, for the, for the power we're purchasing from them. And then due to the production that happens on a monthly basis, our, um, National Grid bill would be less. So it's always the calibration between the two to see how much savings we, we actually incur for month to month. And it's good to look at it over an annual basis.
Okay, and then at that point, the savings would still have to be, it would have to be accrued. So you wouldn't be able to get the, the savings for the extra 10% or whatever that cost is that we were getting. Is that accrued for the year? Or is that already just assumed that's going to happen and it, and it comes off the total amount of the, um, usage?
Brian, do you want to talk about that? I think it's related to the rate that we would be able to get. It would be less if we're able to execute these contracts now. Is that correct?
That is correct. And what I've seen other municipalities do, including my hometown here in Hopkinton, is the budget line item for energy is adjusted according to a full year's discount uh, coming from Select Energy. And so the budget, you know, for the school department for that particular, uh, energy cost is adjusted.
Okay. Thank you.
Lisa, is that, end of your questions? Thank you. Uh, other questions from the board? Julianne?
So, um, I'm just wondering if, if over the course of the contract, over the course of the years of the contract, if there's like a significant improvement in any of the technology or equipment. Does your company replace it or are, are we, eh, you know, is what we, what we get, we get for the next however many years?
So, uh, as the owner of the solar array facility, we'll want to always maximize the amount of energy produced. It's just that there's an incentive for us to do that because the more we can produce, the more you buy, the more we're selling you. You know, you're saving more money, we're selling more kilowatt hours. It's a, it's a win-win scenario. Our service team, so our, um, Select Energy has about 24 now uh, journeyman electricians and apprentice electricians, uh, on staff. And we move around to our arrays all over the Commonwealth and we service and maintain them on a daily basis to make sure that solar production is maximized. Down the road, if the technology changes enough that the expense of changing out would be over, would be, uh, there'd be a solid return on investment to change it, we would consider that. But we'd have to go to Power Options, who's the regulator of all this for you folks, to make sure that would be in order for them as well. Uh, so it's not a unilateral decision on our part, uh, but the savings that you have present there is based on the technology today. So it's a good question because that technology will evolve over time.
Okay, thank you. And, and I, I have to admit, I'm confused about who's signing the contract.
Council, council has recommended that the chair sign it.
Air sign it, okay.
Yeah.
Good, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's subject to council's approval, of course. So I won't sign anything until our council says it's good to go.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
I just have two questions. I, the core one, I'm happy to hear about that. Will your team be in the school at all or is everything going to be outside of the school when they're doing the work there?
So, great question. 95, 98% could be outside, maybe it's 94%. I don't know exactly where your electric room is and how we're going to be interconnecting, whether we're connecting outside at the transformer location or connecting inside in your electric room. Uh, if we're inside anywhere, it's that space and that space only. And then we run conduit to the outside of the building and go from there up to the roof. So, uh, it's a possibility that we would be inside. Uh, they obviously, obviously would be escorted and quarried and the whole nine yards. Um, but, uh, it's highly unlikely that everything would be outside because most schools in Massachusetts have the service entrance equipment, the electric equipment in the, inside the building near that transformer that's outside. And that's typically where we interconnect.
Okay, great.
Laura, I can say when we had Algonquin installed, there was maybe about, uh, two days, uh, tops where there were actual members inside the building, but the rest of it was done on the transformer outside, like Brian said, and then on the roof, of course.
Got it, thank you. My other question is about the transfer. I'm not even sure where those are at the schools, but is there any chance that the kids can be like climbing around on this? Like, is this accessible to the students?
So obviously not on the roof. There is equipment down below at the building level, at the ground level. Uh, there's disconnects there. So if there's any issue in the building itself and the fire department arrives, they're going to want to kill the solar array to make sure there's not electricity coming from a couple of different directions. So it's a safety thing. All that is cordoned off, all that is without, you know, outside the reach of children. It's a very standard process that we work with the local building inspector to make sure is, and the electrical inspector to make sure it's all within code, not only at the state level, but at the local level.
Got it. I think that was all the questions that I have. I just, you know, making sure the kids are safe and they are elementary school kids. If there's a way to climb something, they will. So, um, thank you for clarifying that.
I, I have five children. I'm keenly aware of what they can do.
Thanks Laura. Uh, other questions from the board? Um, I guess, oh, sorry Lisa.
Yeah, I forgot to ask a couple of these. Um, two, and I hope I can remember both. We might say the word trees, but the first question I have is, um, for the cars that are starting to be electric cars. Is there something set up so that, I, Algonquin may have it, I don't know. I mean, I don't think they're going to have it at the kids' schools, but um, what are they got? If, if you were to have one of those set up, would that also be part of it or no? That would be a, a separate, um, benefit, I guess. Um, would be that question. And then the other question I did have and I asked earlier was, um, the trees and, and how, it says in the contract that, that the company gets to remove trees or any obstruction whatsoever into, um, letting the sun get into the solar arrays. And I'm concerned that, you know, we're going to have trees And I'm concerned that, you know, we're going to have trees taken down because of where the panels are put in. On Lincoln Street, the um, the north, the north side of the roof but facing south has got the parking lot and a pretty good space between the tree line and the roof. But on the opposite side, it's very close to a, almost like a wetlands of some sort. Looks like a protected area. So um, what happens with that when you're looking at trying to get the best light uh, availability for you because as you cut trees down, of course, then you cause some other issues that come in and the buildings get hotter because they don't have the natural shade. Um, and you know, the oxygen changeover and all that sort of thing. So how far do you go and do you do you specify the time of uh, installation that these things are fine? There doesn't have to be any trees taken down. Cause I do think there's a lot of Proctor. I, I don't know um, what Proctor has, but I thought that they had like a, a surround of trees.
So a couple of great questions. So let's start with the EV charging opportunity. Yes, that is a separate program that Power Options again oversees and regulates on behalf of municipalities in the state if you so choose to join it uh, or utilize that program. We can incorporate that into our arrays. Um, it's a separate process and a separate setup and a separate contract would come forward. Uh, but we'd be happy to look at that. That's not included in the process to date. Um, and uh, it's not impacted necessarily by what we're dealing with here with this ten percent, you know, credit. Uh, ITC uh, opportunity situation, uh, but certainly something we can talk about. So the answer is yes, but it's Power Options and Select and, you know, Power Options will regulate the whole thing for you guys and for us. Uh, secondly, on the trees, uh, I do not have designs in my head as I sit here. Uh, a couple of things happen uh, when we do the designs. You know, generally we're here in the northern hemisphere. The sun's typically in the southern, you know, in the southern sky. It's east, it's the south and it's the southwest and then the west and, you know, a couple of months in the summertime. Um, the north-facing roofs or trees on the north side of a building don't really bother us at all because the sun's coming in underneath them, if you will. Um, I'd have to confirm some, some of the design criteria that we looked at. But when we do designs and we're maximizing that production to create those savings numbers, uh, we take shading into account. So my sense is there's not a whole lot of that concern right now. That clause is typically so that if trees do grow over time, we can trim them back so that the tree might still be there, but we're trimming back the branches over the array itself. And that does happen from time to time. Um, but I can't give you a specific hard answer right now as to whether trees have to come down or not. I don't know.
Okay, thank you. And if they did, what, when does that get discussed? During the design phase?
It would be discussed during the design phase. It's probably already been discussed. But then we would also discuss it what we call the uh, customer pre-con, so the customer pre-construction meeting, where we meet with everybody and go through those types of questions and make sure, as, and we're at the site too when we do that. And we're looking around and figuring out what has to happen. My sense is that's already been handled, but I don't want to give you information that I don't know for a fact.
Yeah, Keith is giving us a thumbs up, so it, it has been discussed. Keith, do you want to uh, enlighten us as to whether any trees need to come down uh, for the initial install?
And for the initial install, no trees are going to need to be removed. Um, the only thing that would be considered, I think Brian said it very well, is that over time, there are a few and Lisa, you listed them well. Whether or not they become encroachments on the system is something we're going to keep an eye on. But at present, the way that it was designed uh, would really benefit from the south-facing uh, sides, uh, obviously as much as possible. And we actually worked it out pretty well. And that was all part of the feasibility that Select had done and the mapping they had done. And that was one of the prerequisites that we went in with is that we would not have any uh, significant tree removal, if any at all. And in this case, I believe the plans uh, cited just for just trimming where needed, which would probably be a, a good thing and beneficial to the trees, um, not just for the array.
Alright, thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks. Um, my only question is more for Keith than for Brian, which is obviously, you know, the anticipated electric bill is going to go down uh, for these two schools. And um, I would appreciate, and I suspect the whole board would appreciate that, um, you know, next year you, you call that out in the budget request. Um, uh, you know, as, as sort of a, a deduct on whatever other increases that would come next year um, through the regular course of business.
I think Mitch, one thing we were able to do is that, you know, once construction is complete, there is a, a turn. Uh, I mean, we, we had our array at Algonquin installed in August of twenty twenty, but it didn't get turned on until April of twenty-one. So that was a little uh, conceiving because we have to get in the line properly with National Grid and all the things that are required. And granted, uh, that's going to be a lot easier because we're not in the middle of a pandemic. So the hope is that that turnover doesn't uh, happen, but we really needed that solid year's worth uh, to really look at it well. And I believe Greg did hold the numbers uh, solid for those two budget cycles, but then in the third cycle was able to reduce. But don't quote me on that. I believe that's how um, the strategy that he and Becky used.
Yeah, from what I remember, it was, you know, for the budget for FY twenty-five that we just approved, it's, it's consistent budgeting. And then the thinking is, is once everything is installed and turned on, then the next subsequent fiscal year, hopefully there would be um, you know, some, and we can work on that.
I think, no, I think that's very fair to say and I think that would be the goal.
Yeah, perfect. Um, any other questions from uh, from the board? On this. Uh, Tim, anything additional to uh, to offer us?
No, I think you covered it. We got a little confused there about the rate, but I think you guys got there.
Great. Yeah, um, so my understanding is that um, uh, David Dineski from Coleman and Page is, is or KP Law is KP Law's sort of solar contract expert and has dealt with this before. And I think uh, um, they're in the process of finalizing that. And um, on the, you know, assumption that the board approves it as soon as uh, Tim tells me the town council has approved it, then I'll do whatever I'm asked to do for, for signing, but certainly not before then. Um, and it sounded like, yeah, I, I saw an email earlier in the day, Tim, about uh, Sudbury. Um, there being a lot of back and forth and improvements to the contract for Sudbury and um, since we're following right after that, we might as well take advantage of, of that and, and not pay KP Law to renegotiate another fresh contract. Okay, um, if there are no further questions, are folks ready for a motion?
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion. Just have to pull it up. Hold on. You would think it would be ready after all those. Um, all I can see is Diane's. There it is. Diane's saying, I'm not here. Okay. Mister Chair, I move the board vote to authorize the chair to sign the leases and power purchase agreements with Select Energy Development for Solar Project Installations at the Proctor Elementary School and Lincoln Street Elementary School under the Power Operations Program for Massachusetts Municipalities, subject to final approval by Town Council.
Second.
And I think it was, I think you said power, I forget what you said. It, it, Power Options Program. It, it's, yeah, it, it's weird. It's what, it came in as the motion as one word, which isn't a word. So that threw me.
I thought that was like a, a kitschy nickname that the state gave it, but okay.
Okay, so motion made by Kristen. Was it Julianne the second?
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Kristen?
Hi.
Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote I. Voters unanimous in favor. Uh, congratulations Keith. You've got uh, you've got authority to, to go ahead and do everything else. Uh, Tim, please keep me informed as to council's work and let me know um, how and when to sign. I'll be happy to do that. Um, that concludes that item. Does anyone else have any other business uh, to come before the board this evening? Seeing none, uh, we do have one additional public comment slot on the agenda. Is uh, there anyone in the audience that wishes to offer any comment on anything at all? Going once, going twice, seeing none, public comment is closed. We have no need for an executive session uh, this evening as, as Tim let the board know earlier. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Laura, seconded by Kristen, kind of everybody motioned, seconded that. Uh, Laura, how do you vote?
Yeah, aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Lisa? I, Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote I. Voters unanimous in favor. We are adjourned at eight oh two PM. Thank you very much, uh, Keith and Brian for joining us. Uh, good luck with the rest of your program. Keep us informed. Love to know what's going on.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Appreciate your time.
Brian, good luck with your uh, your upcoming election.
Thank you.